It's seven o'clock. I'd like to invite everyone to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Steve Nelson.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Juliene Davy.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Christian Rinn.
Here.
The board is present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just as a public service announcement, if for some reason we have to shelter in place, our shelter area is actually in the hallway right outside of the auditorium here. I'm also told that we don't have any emergency lights out there, which I find hard to believe, but we don't. So you might want to have your cell phones ready and on flashlight so that if we do have to shelter in place, it might be dark out there. Next item would be consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh.
Yes.
Davy.
Yes.
DeVito.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Rinn.
Yes.
Dambek.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board this evening? If so, we'd like to invite you to please come forward to the microphone. Each speaker will have three minutes. There's a timer which will go by, and we ask that you state your name and address and that when you make comments that you refrain from any personal references.
We've got tall people tonight. Hello, Liz Lundin, 822 Somonoc Street. As always, thank you so much for your time and for your service to our community. It is noticed, it's appreciated. I would like to request that future board meetings be livestreamed. There has been a lot of discussion in the community about making that available for people who cannot attend live meetings. Thank you for posting them 72 hours later on YouTube. That is appreciated, but please hear the request for live meetings in the future. I yield my minutes to whoever's behind me.
My name is Lucy Lundt, and I'm at 1716 Parkside Drive, and I yield my minutes to Diana Hayjack.
Hello, my name is Diana Melchon Hayjack. I live at 2221 Maggie Lane in Sycamore. First, I want to thank the board and Mr. Wilder for your time and for listening to what I have to say tonight. Mr. Wilder, I think you know who I am from the email exchanges in 2020, and I feel you should strongly consider, but we can talk about that another time. I had something completely different prepared to talk about tonight, but I have to hold off with that for now, so I will turn it over to my children. I have a 14-year-old daughter who will be a freshman this year, who has always had anxiety. For three years before COVID, she's always been on 10mg of Prozac a day and did fine. Staying home and not being social, I had to have her doctor up her to 20mg of Prozac. When I sent her back to school, the first opportunity I had, now the mask, with the mask, she feels so anxious, she feels like she can't breathe. She was always a child that couldn't try on clothes because the tags bothered her. Imagine how the mask makes her feel now. Because of the mask mandate going back last year in eighth, she had to be up to 30mg of Prozac and 5mg of Bresopin. She sees a psychiatrist once a month, and I am not ashamed to share this because I know she's not the only one. For example, in eighth grade math, after going back, she had to put her mask under her nose for just a minute. Mind you, teachers were already vaccinated or had the opportunity to be. Her eighth-grade math teacher told her to pull up her mask or she would be sent to 201, the dean. She's an AB student, never gets into trouble, loves her country, police, military and flag, and shows respect. Does that sound right to you? Now let's move on to my son, who is going into sixth grade at the middle school. He has autism spectrum disorder and focuses on his mask more than his work. He is on the cusp of being a typical student and special needs, but still needs a par educator. He gets told all day long to pull up his mask because he puts it down. It bothers him being on his face. It fogs up his glasses. He needs transition lenses because the lighting in and out of the classroom is too bright for him. In closing for tonight's meeting, I just want to say, I'm hoping for the next board meeting, my ex-husband, my children's father, and I are in the process of gathering data to support our argument against this unconstitutional mask mandate. His credentials include a scientific background in molecular and cell biology. He sent internships at Argonne National Labs studying structural and molecular biology while in graduate school and graduated defending his master's thesis on the mutations that occur during cell replication and how they define relationships among species, aka variants. He is currently employed as a lead analyst for pharmaceutical company. We will get the data to you when it is ready, and hopefully, we will be able to come in, he will be able to come in from out of state for our next meeting. And the reason for me listing his credentials is because we feel you need to stop blindly believing the CDC and understand that there is an entire community of qualified research professionals who have gathered enough evidence that the CDC is wrong in its recommendations. And I feel that there is more to follow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amber Ferrerix. I live at 640 Clover Lane Drive. I'm yielding my minutes to April DeZenas.
Hello, I am April DeZenas, and I live at 481 East Exchange Street in Sycamore. I want to thank you guys for letting us come and express our opinions and thoughts to you today. I wanted to start off by sharing a few facts about COVID, and I'm quoting this from the CDC. Children 0 to 14, COVID is less dangerous than drowning, car accidents, the flu, homicide, suffocation, almost anything. The survival rates for COVID in children are 99.997%. Adults, 20 to 49 in age, 99.98%. 50 to 69-year-old, 99.5%. Did you know flu cases dropped 99.99% during COVID? In 2019, 2020, we had 38 million cases of the flu. During COVID in 2020, we have only had 1,822. Wow! I mean, we pretty much eliminated the flu with COVID, mostly due to not testing for the flu and only COVID. Masks do not prevent COVID. The particles are too small. It has been proven to travel right through the mask. Follow the science, they say. The science our governor, CDC, State Board of Education, has ignored. You know the teachers' unions asked the CDC to issue mask mandates? Instead, they issued guidance, and based on what political party your governor is, they decided to issue mandates. No shocker, red states see no mask mandates, blue states, we do. This is guidance, not law. Our governor has once again overreached on his power. This mandate is strictly political. It is not following the science. The mandate is overstepping the boundaries of our constitutional rights. In a study published by the World Health Organization, it states, "Who experts advised that uses of face masks is not recommended as potential benefits are rather limited and there is potential risk for self-contamination if used improperly." There is no direct evidence from studies on COVID and in healthy people in the community to prevent infection with universal masking of healthy people in the community to prevent infection of respiratory viruses, including COVID-19. Contamination of the upper respiratory tract by viruses, bacteria on the outside of the mask, has been detected in several hospitals. Another study shows that most masks is a breeding ground for antibiotic-resistant bacteria and fungus, which can also undermine a person's immune system. The studies have shown masks carry tons of bacteria, has our children breathing in unacceptable levels of CO2 and harming our children. One of the biggest harm is mentally. When you take away the human connection of a smile, facial expressions, all of it affects our children and how they learn and causes anxiety for many. Just last year, my seventh-grade daughter was sent to the dean's office for her mask falling below her nose in science class. It insisted, and instead of teaching, my child, she sat in the dean's office for the rest of her class. This is ridiculous and completely unacceptable. The funny thing is, I'm trying to figure out why the world population and death rate percentages stayed the same, virtually even lower than previous years during COVID pandemic. These numbers do not support the COVID pandemic. It is time to take a stand against the overreach of our local government. We have a constitutional right to decide what is best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh.
Can you lower the microphone? Maybe we can hear you better. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kylie Lei. I'm in eighth grade. I live at 421 East Exchange Street. I think that we should just make masks a recommendation because some kids really have trouble trying to breathe, and that's not okay. It has been proven that masks do more harm than anything. They affect some people's anxiety and not being able to see faces. It affects communication and teachers with classmates. Well, I messed up, sorry. The masks don't do anything but make it all harder. Last year in gym, I had trouble breathing as I'm doing sports. I think it is ridiculous that I got sent to the dean's office last year for my mask falling down below my nose, picking it up and then it falling again. I had to stay there for the whole period. If we were forced to wear masks this year, I would gladly take it down when I need to breathe. After school, when I get in the car, every day, it's a headache. I have a headache from the mask. It is messing with our health. Let's put that to an end. What's more important to you, my education or sitting in the dean's office when I should be learning? These masks give me and many other students anxiety.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dawn Diaz. I live at 1728 Rain Tree Court. I don't have any facts for you. All I came to share with you is my experience this summer. I have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. My eight-year-old daughter became sick this summer with an everyday children's virus. She ended up in the hospital, was tested for COVID, ambulanced out to Central DuPage Pediatric Intensive Care Unit for a week, not with COVID, with rhinovirus, enterovirus, norovirus, adenovirus. Dr. Shankar, her pediatrician, said that this is happening to adults and children because of the masks and lockdowns affecting our immune systems. This is my daughter from the mask. This is what we went through for a week. This is not okay. This is how sick she was in the pediatric intensive care unit. A week after she got out, my husband was admitted to Kishwaki for the same everyday commons kids, but common kids viruses caused by masks and lockdown. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gillette. I live at 1784 Joseph Sixberry Street in Sycamore. Thank you for being open to hearing our points of view on matters that affect the education, experiences, and safety of our children. During the last board meeting, I heard cheers for the hashtag #TogetherWeSpartan, and throughout the last year, I heard parents pleading for a return to in-classroom learning. We need to unite around a common goal together as a community of Spartans and do all we can to keep our children learning in the classroom this year. We need to keep universal masking in place until all kids that want to get vaccinated can and keep applying our layers of prevention to help us achieve this goal. I like spending time with data because it's what I've worked with for over 20 years. Over the last year, I spent time reviewing peer-reviewed studies from researchers who I took, who I look to for their expertise in understanding the data and its nuances much better than I. And they all consistently say the risk of transmission of COVID is highest with unmasked, prolonged, indoor, close contact, and masks are effective at reducing the risk of acquiring COVID, and they are safe. The studies in this space align with what we saw in our school district in the spring of 2021. We saw a large number of students return to learn in person, which was helped by universal mask and our layered approach to keeping kids safe. This was at a time when the main variant was spreading at a rate of one person infecting two other people. This year, we will see all students return to the classroom and the Delta variant that spreads at a rate of one person infecting five other people. Due to the high number of infections from a single case of the Delta variant, I encourage us to take all precautions to protect our children until we have vaccines for all ages, high local vaccination rates, and consistently low case counts. There is no better way to keep our children in school than to wear a mask. If masks are not part of our layers of protection to return to learn, then based on what we know, the risks become greater that we'll see one case in our district turn into five, then 25, 125, and then over 500. In just a few weeks, with 10 to 15 children in the hospital, possibly hospitalized. If your Sycamore student knew wearing a mask would possibly save their best friend from going to the hospital or worse, death, would they complain? I don't think so. In closing, we cannot forget the lessons learned from the success of last school year, all wearing masks. Last year, the mantra was, "Get kids back to class." Now that mantra must be, "Keep kids safe in class." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Marshall. I live at 540 Clover Lane Drive, and I'm yielding my minutes to Mike Schrader.
Hi, my name is Lisa Shao. I live on Freedom Circle in Sycamore, and I am also yielding my minutes to Mike Schrader.
Good evening. Mike Schrader, 1757 Charles Wade Street in Sycamore. I have six kids in Sycamore. Three of them have graduated from Sycamore High School. Two of them are proudly serving the military, and one that is going to be in the high school this year, and two at St. Mary's in Sycamore as well. I want to thank you for your time again and your service to the community, especially in these challenging times. I hope we can continue to dialogue on all important issues for the betterment of our children. I know you have a lot of stats thrown at you on a regular basis, and as a concerned parent, just like my previous speaker, I want to be educated on the reasons that we're putting protocols in place and dig into the data that supports that. I certainly know you feel you may have your hands tied now with the executive order from last week, and I want you to know that the parents of Sycamore 427 support you, but also feel it's important to keep voicing our opinion on behalf of our children and encourage you to do the same. I personally would like to see our board challenge this executive order, and here's why. As reported by the CDC as of July 20th, 2021, so just a few weeks ago, 335 children total in the United States have died in the 18 months of the COVID-19 pandemic. 335. The majority of those have been confirmed with underlying conditions. That equates to about 224 kids in a 12-month period. That's just for comparative purposes. There's no start and end date to that. In 2019, per the CDC, again on their website, and that being the last full year, you can get a full year's worth of data, as reported a little bit earlier, almost 2,000 died in a car accident. Our governor put no orders in place to prevent parents from driving their kids to school. 722 kids died of drowning. Again, no preventative mandates. Maybe the most telling that we really need to pay attention to? 278 children in 2019 died of influenza or pneumonia. 278, 1.25 times more than died in a 12-month period of COVID. Nothing was done, no measures taken, nothing put in place. There's a gross overreach of power with the situation of COVID in general when it comes to our parental rights to decide on what's best for our children's health. Now, if we look at the most recent mandate, our governor is justifying his recent mask mandate last week based on a partially, at least partially, statistics presented by IDPH Director Dr. Negozia Iziki. Her data indicated that COVID is a rising danger to children, and I'm going to quote her. In January of this year, about 5.5% of cases were among those younger than 10 years of age. Last month, that increased to nearly 15%. Similarly, 13% of cases in January were among those ages 10 to 19, and in July, that increased to 23%. We are seeing the same trend for hospitalizations. It sounds horrifying, right? That's the headline. It sounds horrifying. But if you dig into the IDPH's own statistics, you'll uncover a gross manipulation of those numbers. The data on the real numbers tells a totally different story. In January of 2021, the total new cases of COVID in Illinois were 163,000. Okay? Using Dr. Iziki's stats from the quote, 5.5% of the cases being children under 10, 13% of the cases being ages 10 to 19, that's 18.5%, 30,000 actual cases of COVID in Illinois in January. In July, 27,000 total new cases in Illinois. Using again her stats, 15% in children 10 and younger, 23% in children 10 to 19, 38% of the total cases, or 10,000. So we have one-third the number of cases in Illinois for kids right now than in January. That is not the story the headline tells. That is not the story they're putting out there. We are so much better in shape right now than we were in January, but there's a scare tactic there. They want to make it sound like it's worse, and it's not. The reality is, is that the case numbers are now better than they were in January and presented in a way to make things look much worse. Why? Because the actual numbers certainly don't justify an emergency executive order, and they definitely don't justify the unnecessary harm masks inflict on our children. And we're in DeKalb County. This isn't, the numbers are much lower as opposed to other places around the state. There are many well-documented studies on inefficiency of masks to fight COVID-19. Some you heard before, and the harm they can cause also you heard. But I'll give you my firsthand experience. My three kids were fortunate to go to St. Mary's last year, intend in-person class five days a week, all day long, with masks. I'm very glad that they were able to do that, but it's time that that ends. I saw my kids come home every day after school, just drained of energy. Again, the headaches, sinus conditions, you know, issues with their skin, rashes, straps, you know, all these things. My seven-year-old can't wear her prescription glasses because they fog up. She can't read with them. These are real issues that are preventing good education for our children because they can't focus, you know, and they're losing their ability to concentrate. At the end of the school, the summer was here, masks came off there at home, all of these things went away. All of these things went away. Masking all day has a negative effect on our children. The risk of COVID, based on everything previously mentioned, is not large enough to infringe upon our rights as parents to choose what is best for our kids, especially by an emergency executive order. It's just not, the data's not there. Please consider standing up to this and supporting those of us who will. I also, in ending, just want to leave you with a message and to the parents or anyone in the community who feel that masks should be required. I respect all of your personal decision and decide to decide what's best for you and your family. Please respect mine. Because if we all allow things like this to continue, where does it stop? Six months from now, there may be a study that finds out that kids learn better without a mask. You may not feel comfortable sending your kid to school without a mask. You may be forced to. Right now, you're on one side of the issue, but someday, you might be on the other side. And if we give into this kind of stuff now, you may stop, you may lose your right to choose what's best for your children forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Diana Holst. I live at 219 Somonoc Street in Sycamore. First of all, I want to thank the board members. Your continued efforts to support Sycamore and your dedication to this community is greatly appreciated. We don't envy the challenges you've had to face over this past year. By now, you've received a vast amount of information, whether it be from email or through meetings, about the data covering everything from the statistically minuscule risk of hospitalization and death for children of COVID, the limited efficacy of masks, to the lack of accuracy of the PCR test, which the CDC is going to phase out as of December because it cannot differentiate between COVID and influenza, to the low case rates in Sycamore, and information about how there is a lack of any actual state of emergency in Sycamore that would warrant the governor to take emergency powers over Sycamore. I know you've talked with the team of lawyers and made risk-benefit analysis for your own course of action. Some other districts are looking at a different path. Parent groups are forming to help advocate for the rights of parents and the rights of local officials to respond to local issues. We are all making risk-benefit calculations based on data. Parents want healthy children, and they want healthy communities. For many, this means leaving the decisions in the hands of the parents and the local school boards. In the meantime, we expect that our children, who may struggle with mask use, be treated with dignity, respect, kindness, and understanding and compassion. There are children with sensory issues, those on the autism spectrum, children with asthma or anxiety, and those with trauma histories who might struggle with having their mouths covered. We need to keep those things in mind and expect that our teachers and our staff will keep those things in the back of their head when they are working with children. You need to keep in mind that children may not be acting difficult, they may be having difficulty, and they need your help. Also, keep in mind that August to October is ragweed season, and not every sniffle or sneeze is going to be a cause for alarm. This community will support, and we will fight for our school district. We ask that the school district fight for our community as well, in whatever way it can. And just on a side note, if the face shields aren't option, I know upstaging has been selling them. I'd be happy to purchase them for my kids and have a fund to purchase those who can't afford it because that is an awesome innovation that I wish we could all use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lee Zooker. I work at the high school. I just wanted to comment and speak of some concerns due to the lack of non-certified staff for this upcoming year. Our bus drivers and paraprofessionals are often highly overlooked, and they're extremely important roles in our school communities. At this time, we're short a significant amount of these positions across our district. We need to fill, I believe, a minimum of 14 paraprofessional positions and I think eight bus drivers, last I heard. So I'm asking on behalf of the staff and parents in the district that we make filling these positions a priority, and that comes in the form of higher benefits, better pay, and a culture change. It's my understanding that DeKalb has increased their pay for these positions, nearly $4 an hour for the upcoming school year. SESI schools in DeKalb County are offering a $500 bonus for taking the positions. We're a team, and we can't function without, or I'm sorry, we can't function as a district in the best interest of our students without filling these. We need to entice non-certified staff that are coming in, and we need to reward and recognize those who've stayed with us in really trying times. They're very important pieces of our school community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheriff Palmer Cook. I live at Elmwood Street in Sycamore. My daughter is going into fourth grade at South Prairie. She spent all last year learning remotely. She's a kid who loves school and is more than ready to be back in the classroom with her friends. She and all kids deserve to be back in the classroom, learning safely. I am so relieved to know that everyone in schools will be masked this fall. Masks are an easy preventative measure that we can take to help keep kids, teachers, staff, and our community safe against the spread of COVID. They've proven to be safe and effective when everyone wears them. Just sending my child with a mask does not cover it. She spent all last year learning remotely. She's a kid who loves school and is more than ready to be back in the classroom with her friends. She and all kids deserve to be back in the classroom, learning safely. I am so relieved to know that everyone in schools will be masked this fall. Masks are an easy preventative measure that we can take to help keep kids, teachers, staff, and our community safe against the spread of COVID. They've proven to be safe and effective when everyone wears them. Just sending my child with a mask does not cover it. Everyone needs to be wearing them. Schools have proven to be safe if a layered precautionary approach is followed. I would urge the board to continue with layered preventative measures. As a parent, I would like to more detail about the plans in place for this fall. For instance, what the plan is for lunch. This is not the time to let up, especially since a large portion of students are not yet eligible for the vaccine, and the CDC has said that the Delta variant is at least twice as contagious as previous strains and has been impacting a younger, healthier population. This is a serious virus with serious consequences, including an aside from possible death. According to the CDC, COVID can potentially have lasting effects on most, if not all, body systems, including heart, lung, kidney, skin, and brain functions. I love this community, and I love our schools. We have had nothing but above and beyond teachers and administrative staff. I care about all the kids here, and I want to protect them along with my daughter. We take care of each other all the time. Mandated health precautions are nothing new. We limit what food can come into classrooms to protect children with allergies. There's a long list of vaccines that children are required to get before coming to school. These measures protect the child and the greater community. I would urge all of us to continue to take this pandemic seriously since we are not out of the woods yet. It keeps the community safer and also reduces the disruptions in learning if we minimize outbreaks in the classroom. Let's keep up the mitigations so we can keep kids in class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie Rawls. I live on Primrose Lane. I'm here today to ask Superintendent Wilder and the board to heed the advice from the majority of health professionals. The CDC, health departments, pediatricians, immunologists, epidemiologists, and so forth have all stated how important masks are to reducing the spread of COVID. Can someone find a study on the internet refuting these claims? Sure, you can find lots of things on the internet. But let's face it, the majority of experts are telling us masks reduce the spread of COVID, masks save lives. Masks should be worn as a precaution until the vaccine is available to all ages. Once that happens, parents will truly be free to make the best health decisions for their family. I believe we give far too little credit to our children for the ability to wear a mask. Many did it towards the end of last school year. Many did it all through the summer in out-of-school care programs. We need to start giving our children more credit. Our children have endured so much to this point, and we are so close to having a vaccine available to them. Why burn it all down so close to the finish line? Many have argued that children aren't getting sick from COVID. According to the Mayo Clinic, the fact is there have been a small number of children with multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which is a dangerous disease linked to coronavirus. Children are suffering long haul COVID symptoms, and children are dying. The number of infections and deaths in children has been increasing in recent weeks at an alarming rate. Kids with, kids sick with COVID are filling up children's hospitals. Doctors on the front lines say they are seeing more critically ill children than they have at any previous point of the pandemic, and that the highly contagious Delta variant is likely to blame. From July 22nd to the 29th, nearly 72,000 new pediatric COVID cases were reported, almost twice as many as the previous week. The head of the American Academy of Pediatrics said the Delta variant has created a new and pressing risk to children and adolescents across the country. The Mayo Clinic adds that kids also play a role in community spread of COVID-19. That's because oftentimes, kids don't cover their coughs or sneezes and don't wash their hands very well. And since many children have mild or no symptoms at all, it's crucial they wear a face mask to help reduce the spread. Yesterday, ISB published its new guidance for the P through 12 schools. Under the masking, they ask, "Who must wear masks in schools?" The answer they provide is "everyone." Executive Order 2021-18 requires that all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to P through 12 schools wear a mask while indoors regardless of vaccination status. Appropriate mask use, i.e. covering over face and nose, correct fit across the face, and the correct material used for masking is essential to prevent transmission. According to your own student appearance policy, a student's attire must promote reasonable standards of health and safety. I would suggest not wearing a mask as recommended by the CDC, IDPH, and school board would violate this policy and therefore be handled in a similar fashion to rectify the issue. I implore you to diligently enforce the mask mandate.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the board this evening who hasn't had a chance?
Hi, my name is Jody Riley. I live at 331 Home Street in Sycamore. I have a senior in high school, and my son graduated already. I also own a business in town, and I work with children. I never mandated masks. I never social distanced, and we held hands, and I treated them like children. We did not have one case of COVID this year that was directly linked to the studio that I own. And I just feel like that it should be a parent choice. As an instructor, I don't feel like I should be the mask police to my students. It's important when kids are learning to be able to see their expressions as part of what I teach in dances, using expression. And when you have a mask on, that's very difficult. I also sub in the school system, but I chose not to last year because I myself have trouble wearing a mask. I ask that you consider or reconsider your decision on masking the children this year. I would come back to subbing this year if masks were a choice. I feel like parents need to be able to have a choice for their children. I'm not a medical doctor. I shouldn't put medical decisions on other people's children. I'm not comfortable with that. And I understand that you're all under a lot of pressure, but I ask that, how would you feel if something happened to a child, if they were wearing a mask, and they got sick because of the mask? The opposite could happen, there's, you know, I'm sorry. I just don't think that it's our job to make medical decisions for other people. And I'm asking you to reconsider your choice in masking the entire district because I don't feel that it should be your choice. I feel it should be a parental choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you to everyone that came out tonight on such a wicked weather night to address the board. Appreciate that. We listened to all of your comments. We take them in. We consider them when we make decisions. Please know that as a board, we also read your emails that you send, and we do a lot of research on both statistics and on the law, on statutes, on cases. And we try to take all that information into account when we make decisions and try to make the best decisions for our students and for our district. We may not always agree on the course that we take, but as some, actually many of the comments indicated tonight, we are all Spartans. We are all supporters of the district. And we look for your support when we make decisions, and we hope that you'll understand the reasoning for our decisions and that you will continue to support us and make this the absolute best school district that it can possibly be. So, so thank you. It's your participation like this that helps to make this district a better place. So we appreciate that. Next item would be communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters. There were, there were letters in newsletters. FOIA requests, three FOIA requests that were made and answered. Committee reports?
I can start with a couple of those. No planning and zoning meeting this month. That would have been last night, but there was none. I'll let Steve Wilder talk a little bit about tomorrow and the partnership with SEF on that. But last Friday, I did have the opportunity to drive down to Springfield and spend the evening going over all the resolutions that were submitted to IASB for consideration at the annual conference at the delegate assembly. There were 25 of them. We started at 5:30 PM and finished at 12:15 AM. And I'm not going to spend five minutes on each one like I was hoping to. Just kidding. I'll just read a few of the highlights. There was one district that submitted 10 different resolutions. Champaign Unit 4 submitted 10 different resolutions. Some notable ones that will be brought up at the delegate assembly were giving the board 40 days instead of 28 to reorganize after an election. There were four or five charter school-related ones that were passed as a consent agenda because they're more reaffirmations. There was a request to pursue Indigenous people curriculum inclusion. There was two similar resolutions regarding adopting or promoting the adoption of the science of reading curriculum specifically, basically telling us all we have to use one specific curriculum. Not sure we want to have them telling us to do that. Child safety gun storage was brought up again for the second time. Physical and mental health for students, advocating for some of that. Preparing all students to succeed, which was amended a couple of times, and that's more about providing inclusionary opportunities. Pre-service teacher education and licensure and literacy was one. Allowing video conferencing for open meetings acts. There was discussion on the new health and sex education curriculum being a local decision, not a mandate. And the student safety and protection plan came up again, as well as pursuing cannabis sales to help fund education. So those are some of the highlights, not all of them. But it was an interesting debate for however many hours that was, seven hours. And they will, they will go to the delegate assembly at the annual conference. We will get a booklet probably about a month in advance of that. We'll all get copies of that that show what the committee's decision was, whether either to adopt or not adopt. And then anybody that was voted down does have the opportunity to submit an appeal and be heard on the floor at the delegate assembly. As of right now, there still is an in-person conference. If that changes, they'll revert back to what we did last year, which was a virtual delegate assembly. One thing that they are carrying forward from this past year is, in preparation for that virtual delegate assembly, they had two online, like seminar webinars that went through and reviewed everything that was on here. Everyone found that very useful, even for a year that you're hoping to meet in person. So they are scheduling those. If you go on the IASB website, you'll see two different dates for those. I believe one's a weeknight evening and one's a Saturday morning if you want to learn anything about any of the resolutions that have been brought forward. So in more detail, before the booklet comes out. And then we should discuss that at least a little bit at a meeting prior to the conference. So as your delegate, I know which way the board would like me to vote. So, that's all I've got.
Can I ask you a question about that, Steve?
Yeah.
Were there any bills that had to do with local control about health-related questions? I know I was looking through today, and there is a position statement 622 that encourages members of the US Congress, Illinois General Assembly, and related administrative agencies, and state and federal courts to take a regional approach in response to national health emergencies, thinking that that's probably the most relative statement to the...
Yeah, very general.
Right, but very general. Was there anything more specific brought up?
Nobody brought anything forward specifically about that that was on the list. But there was a lot of discussion on a number of these items, probably half a dozen of them at least, that could that just fall under the broad spectrum of advocating for local control? So we advised a couple of them that we did vote to do not adopt, that perhaps you want to pursue something along those lines as far as how you want to approach your topic and how it affects local control. The same thing is true about the student safety and protection plan, that it's really more about local control than it is about having a gun in the school or not as a staff member. So one other one that I thought was also very interesting was the, one district wanted them to open up and review all aspects of the Illinois school code, which used to be about that big, but it's now about that big. And if you've got a legislature that just had 730 or 40 education bills in one session, you want to let them open up the school code and change all of it, be careful what you ask for. So that was the crux of that discussion. But perhaps maybe next go-around, we would like to craft a resolution along the lines of the local control aspect.
We certainly can do that as a board and submit that if we wanted to.
I think if we want to pursue that, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
I'd be happy to work with you on that. Thanks, Steve.
Any other questions?
The Policy Committee met last week. So we'll have a packet probably in our next board meeting to review. I can tell you, without going into too much detail, that it's mostly a five-year review of different policies and just some updating. So not really a whole lot of choices to be made or changes to be made other than just updating references to statutes, basically. But, you know, one thing that we did remark about at the Policy Committee meeting is that local control is being wrested from us more and more every year. When you see, you know, 720, 30, however it was, many bills that became laws that now are binding on us in one year. And when you see how the policy has affected and how the choices we used to have and how we could use some local decision-making and control over those policies, how that's been taken away from us by the legislature, it's a little disconcerting. It's more than a little disconcerting, it's very disconcerting. And, you know, we see that more and more, that local control is being taken away. So I think that if we're of the mind to do it, we should maybe consider for next year's conference submitting some kind of a resolution that talks about restoring local control to school boards because it really is evaporating. Any other committee reports? Move on then to the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Programs report.
So tonight, we wanted to recognize our excellence in education honorees, our nominees and our winners. Some of you are probably more familiar with excellence in education. Some of you, this may be something new. So I wanted to provide just a little background information for you for those of you that maybe aren't as aware. But every year, an elementary educator, a middle school educator, a high school educator, support staff, and admin are recognized on DeKalb County with the Excellence in Education Award. And I think it has to be mentioned that Yvonne Johnson made this all possible, Sycamore's own. Some of you may know the history and know a little better, but if my math is correct, Ms. Johnson served the school district for around 51 years in different capacities, which is just mind-boggling to me. And the work that she did and what she set up gives this an opportunity to DeKalb County Community Foundation to recognize all these honorees. So it's amazing. And if you look through the requirements, it's people that serve in schools with an emphasis on service to the community. And the primary thing they look at is one's ability to inspire all students, the learning of all students, not just a certain kind of student. So with that, some of our nominees. First off, Kent Tanaki is the high school nominee this year. And I wanted to share some things that were written about these individuals. That's something that I don't know if the board always got to see unless you made it to that ceremony, that celebration. But it's amazing, and these come from colleagues, from parents, and from students. And what was said about Kent is, "Mr. Tanaki taught me friendship. He has given me experiences I will remember the rest of my life. He's encouraged me to become a better person. He works relentlessly to meet the needs of all students. He's instilled a sense of pride..." He's instilled a sense of pride and fulfillment for a lifetime in our children. We all know about the orchestra accomplishments in the district, which should be mentioned, but all these things revolve around relationships, about what these teachers do to go above and beyond. One of the other comments that I didn't put up here that stuck out was over the last year and a half, Ken going to driveways to fix or tune instruments for individuals because they weren't coming in, not because he was told to, but because he wanted to to give students that opportunity. So with that said, Ken Tanaki, would you like to come down here? And we have a Board of Education medal. Congratulations, Jim. Justin Hames from the middle school was a winner of this award for DeKalb County. And in fact, this year, and I think this is pretty unheard of, we took four of the five in this, not that it's about competition, but Sycamore educators did. Friendly competition. But some things that were said about Mr. Hames, he teaches with an energy I had not seen from any other teacher, but this parent was quick to say, my kids have had all great teachers and great experiences. But there was just something about Mr. Hames. He's kind, patient, intelligent, motivated, engaging, inclusive and a great communicator. He gives students a place to learn and grow in both science and in life. And this is from a colleague. He is truly a selfless person, which is one of the most defining qualities in his approach to teaching. He has no interest in being recognized, nor does he want acknowledgement for all the extra things he does as a teacher, leader or community member. He just wants his students to learn all they can while he is entrusted with their learning. In fact, this colleague said that the process of having to talk about yourself for the Excellence in Education, that Mr. Hames would really struggle with this because he's so humble. Through the last year and a half, parents talked about and students talked about experiments going on in his backyard, trying to engage students in sciences. So Justin Hames, if you're here, come on down, please. Next was the elementary winner, Holly Majeris for DeKalb County. This is what colleagues, parents, students said. Ms. Majeris empowers her students to take risks. She goes the extra mile to build personal relationships and a positive rapport with students, staff and parents. Goes above and beyond to help others and not judge them by the assistance that they need. Has a special bond with each student and makes learning fun. A student said, Mrs. Majeris is my favorite teacher. I learned to read in her class. A lot of the comments that were made had to do with service, making sure families in the community had meals, whether it be through the food pantry or other things she got started on her own, that she does on her own time. So with that said, Holly, please come on down to be recognized. The support staff winner in DeKalb County for the Excellence in Education was Cory Mauch. Comments that were made, Ms. Cory is a beam of light and reassurance. Ms. Cory helps us feel so safe. Ms. Cory is an extraordinary individual to anyone that is blessed enough to have her in their lives. A colleague said, I hope in some way our community can understand all that Ms. Mauch did to keep us safe. And this is from a student who was clearly keeping track. Ms. Cory is nice and helped me 1,000 times. I think she should win because she is caring and she loved everyone no matter what. So she should win. So if Cory's here, please come on down and be recognized. And our last staff member to be recognized, wanted to go out on top, I guess, but this is someone who's all about other people constantly and advocating for other people. But the administrator recipient of the Excellence in Education was Lynn Riley. What people said, Lynn has a passion for helping others. She always puts students first. She has a positive attitude and treats others with respect and gratitude. And we can attest cookies as well, most Fridays, so on those early mornings. A student said, I would say that the support that Ms. Riley has given me throughout school has helped me have one of my most successful school years this year. This student talked about every time Ms. Riley is in that student's school, stopping in and just checking in to see how they're doing, make sure they're doing okay, that they're calm, that they're in the right emotional state. So Lynn, please come on down. I know you hate this, but be recognized. Jim, one more. Mr. Donbeck, one more. So, well, last staff member, but fitting in the category of Excellence in Education, and this is kind of late, hot off the press, but a student and now a graduate that needs to be recognized, and I'm going to have Karen and Christian come down in a second, but Max Griffey for a record book recognition. So we recently found out in the last few days that Max's record book and the work he did on that is top four in the United States. He'll interview for a national title in October and will be recognized onstage at the National Convention. No kid or student has had or made it this far in the past 25 years. Sycamore, I think, has had eight, four total, four total? He's the fifth. He's the fifth one. And the last one was in 1980? 1985. So Karen, Christian, do you have anything else just to fill in the dots there? Because it's not my area of expertise, so to talk a little bit about that, do you want to come down?
So yeah, this is exciting. I found out Friday in the middle of my son's first 4-H fair, and I had to wait to call everybody until after he was done, and it was really, really hard to do. So we are just so excited. And the thing is about last year is that we knew we had to put our students first because they needed us. And so that's what we did. And it was a lot of work, but we had a lot of success because they were willing to work with us, we were willing to work with them, and we made it work. Whether it was virtual, the times we were in person, you know, he interviewed for all of these over Zoom, okay? So to think that he could do this, he could tell all of his knowledge virtually locked in the office in our shop, shows a lot about the knowledge that he has. And if you look there, really, our job as ag teachers is three circles, and that's instruction that we do in the classroom, SIE, which is our record books, and then FFA, and that makes the whole student. And that makes our whole program. And when we have successes like this, it just shows that these students want to work hard, they love what they do, and we're just here to support them. And we're very thankful of the support that we have all the time from the board and from parents, staff, community. Everything that we do is because we love our job and we love these kids, and we want them to have success as much as we, you know, we had four kids interview at State, and then Max won, so we found that out. And like I said, we found out Friday, so now he'll go through another interview process, get to send in pictures. We worked probably 25 to 30 hours on an application we had to send in. So right now, he won just based on an application and his records that he kept. I'm going to let him talk really quick because it's kind of a neat story because his record book actually started here at Sycamore High School. So I'm going to let him talk a little bit about that and where he is now.
Hello, all. My record book started when I was in my sophomore year of high school. I was offered the green shirt position with the high school, which is part-time maintenance, working around the district. I personally worked majority at the high school, cleaning garbage up, painting and doing other miscellaneous jobs. I then transitioned to work at CSR Bobcat, which is a construction equipment dealer in DeKalb. There, I worked on various types of construction equipment, doing every repair known to the brand of equipment. In doing that, I kept accurate records of everything I did, the hours I worked and the pay I received. And then I am transitioning currently, working for the City of DeKalb Street Department, where I will continue to keep an accurate record of the pay and hours to continue my record book. But I want to give a special thank you to Ms. Pointer and Mr. Thierwanger, because I would not be in this position without them. I was not going to do a record book this year until I was forced to try. I say forced, but it's not really forced. They just gave me the extra kick in the ankle to get it going. And I'm very glad I did because I would not be in the position this year I am without them.
His mom and dad, Jason and Kate Griffey are here tonight along with Molly, who's going to be an officer for me this year as a senior. And I give his mom credit too, because I was on FaceTime with Molly, talking to her about her record book, and her mom's like, wait, Max was supposed to be there? He'll be there right now. And so she's the one who helped get him here. I knew he had potential to be a state winner. I really did, and we worked really hard on this national application because I really did see him as a national finalist, because he really just works. He was at DeKalb, City of DeKalb, for two weeks as an intern, and then they offered him a full-time job because they saw the potential in him that I've seen since he was a freshman, eighth grade, really. So I just want to thank you guys. This is just one of the kids that I could recognize, I could recognize a lot more, but it's a really special honor. You probably will be able to watch it, it'll be Thursday morning, session two, and I'll send that to you guys. All four of us get to go onstage, and they literally announce the winner right there. So you might see me bawling my eyes out if he wins. Yeah, I don't know what's going to happen if he wins. But I'll get that information to you guys so you can watch it virtually as well. So thank you again for the recognition and congratulations.
I just wanted to say that before we move on to the next segment of the meeting, in 2020, the Excellence in Education awards were awarded, but we didn't have a chance to celebrate those, obviously. So they celebrated the 2020 Excellence in Education awards this year with the 2021 awards. And the winner of the 2020 award for best administrator is Nick Reinick.
I don't have a slide for him, but I do want to say that each of the award winners have a student who presents on their behalf and presents to the gathering why they think that the person being given the award should win the award, as you saw from some of those comments, because he should win, you know? But I think the most poignant outpouring of support for why someone should win came from the young lady who was supporting Mr. Reinick. She, by her own admission, had really messed up her life. She was a person that if somebody hadn't taken an interest in her, I'm not even sure she would still be here with us. And I think she would agree to that. And she talked about how bad her life was, but how somehow Mr. Reinick saw through that and how she appreciated so much that he took time to deal with her, to listen to her, to help her, to assist her. And it was really, she attributed that intervention on his behalf with her ability to transform her life. And she really has made a difference. She really has changed the way she lived her life. It was an amazing story, and I don't think there were many dry eyes in the House after they heard this young lady give testimony. So this is very well deserved, and I wish I had a slide to go along with this, but I can give you a medal, so.
I wonder how he got left off the list. I don't know. Next item would be the superintendent's report. Oh, no, the PLC Summer Institute report.
I have one more, and this is just kind of a follow-up to the discussion that was had and presentations from July. But just to give you an update, kind of what's going on within the district coming up here. There's a PLC Summer Institute that's happening before teachers technically start, and that is going to be Wednesday, so starting tomorrow through Friday. And Wednesday, Thursday are full days, Friday is a half day. These are national speakers, and it's all around PLC and some different topics. It's different format, so there's always a keynote speaker. But then there's different breakout sessions as well, panel discussions. For the breakout sessions, there are several different options, so teachers can kind of personalize it to what they want to get out of it. Throughout those days, there's team time, brainstorming, lots of different options. There's stuff for leaders within schools as well. So it's a great opportunity. We did this two years ago, 2019, I think this is, and that was more middle school based, it was open to others, but a main focus on the middle school and trying to get teachers involved. And their PLCs really started to take off, and you heard from some of them last month, and then the pandemic hit, and some of that got broken up. But I really think that's also what kind of held things together is kind of where we've gone with the PLC. So this year, when we decided to try and get this up and going again, it was to get more people involved. How can we get the most people possible? So we tried to push it, and this time around, again, this is before teachers technically start, we have 181 participants, which is nearly two-thirds of our staff, which is unbelievable. We're very excited. And that's not all each day, you know, people have stuff going on still, even childcare requirements, so that's spread out over those three days. Some people are all three days, some people are going to come when they can make it. But just a really exciting opportunity and kind of that next step with professional development with PLCs leading into the school year. So just wanted to update you on that opportunity that staff has.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to start with some of the slides that we showed to just kind of remind ourselves of our mission, vision, values. You know, our mission is empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Our core values are listed there, I'm just going to touch on a couple, trustworthiness, equality, citizenship, responsibility, collaboration. I'll hit on all five of the PLC questions that we asked ourselves, what do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How will we know if they have learned it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? Before I go on to my next slide, I just want to pause here for a second. I am going to talk about planning for the upcoming school year first, that's the first topic. I really want to echo some of the comments that Mr. Donbeck made earlier. We appreciate the input, the support. We don't always agree. And some of the meetings, frankly, over the last year have been passionate, is probably the best word to say it, maybe even a little bit further than that. I just want to take a minute to commend all of the speakers who came forth tonight and shared their thoughts. I thought it was unbelievably respectful, polished, well-thought-out, and I just appreciate all of that input. So with that, I'm going to launch into planning, just an update on planning for the 2122 school year. year. I've talked about this already publicly when the executive order was issued, that we would follow the mask mandate in Sycamore schools. I could go on and on about that and my personal feelings about that. I'm not going to. I will tell you that in my role as superintendent, part of my job is to review things like executive orders and new policies, procedures, guidelines when they're issued. It's been a challenging year, year and a half really, but for a variety of reasons, I am recommending that the school district follow the executive order. One of the things I am frustrated about, one of probably more than one, there is not an end date currently. So one of the things we've already started to ask for at the district level is, when is this going to end? Are there signs, metrics, that the state is going to follow that would trigger an end date to the mask mandate? We've not heard anything on that yet, but I will update the board as well as the community if that ever comes out. There's been some questions about the governor's authority, and we've asked that from our legal team, just to get a little bit more information. Essentially, without any additional information, at least not right now, essentially, the governor's authority extends from the emergency conditions within the state as a result of the pandemic. It does have the effect of law and is enforceable. One of the questions I fielded is, what happens if a school district chooses not to follow the mandate? So what risk is out there aside from legal liability, liability if a student or staff member were to get sick, you know, even deathly sick? Some of the potential consequences in addition to those things that we need to consider are loss of recognition from the Illinois State Board of Education. So ISB, our State Board of Education, issues recognition to all public school districts in the state of Illinois annually. There are a variety of things that they review and check, and they issue that recognition. That carries a lot of weight. We get a certificate. It's posted in the district office. But achieving that recognition is really important. And one of those, one of the reasons that it's really important has to do with state funding. One of the things that can be done if a school district's recognition is pulled is that the state can withhold, delay, and/or school districts could lose state funding. For us, we receive about $11 million annually from the state of Illinois. That's about 20% of the revenue for our budget. Again, I'm not going to go into personal feelings about the mask mandate, but in my role, I can't consciously recommend that we would lose an opportunity like that and the funding that is potentially on the line. One of the other things that's important to consider is that if school districts aren't recognized, they can lose their membership with the IHSA and the IESA that oversees middle school activities. So if that recognition is pulled, students will not be able to participate in IHSA or IESA sanctioned events. Now, our middle school participates in some events, some activities that are IESA sanctioned, some of them are not. So the activities that aren't IESA sanctioned, the school district, those students would. But there are some activities that students would lose out on. And in addition, I've talked about this already, there is an increased liability exposure. And on top of all of that, one of the things we've talked consistently about, that we talked about here tonight, that you guys commented on, as well as we've talked about throughout the last year, year and a half, you know, comes down to student safety. So that also plays a role in this, the impact on students, the impact on staff, and their safety inside the school. So a lot of things to weigh, but again, for a variety of reasons, I am recommending that the school district follow the governor's executive order. One of the questions had to do with face shields. So there is an exemption from face masks from IDPH. This comes right off the IDPH website. If a child has a medical contra-indication, for example, difficulty breathing if they're wearing a mask, they may be allowed to not wear a mask, and they may be asked to wear a face shield or do something differently. In addition, if a child is developmentally disabled, either physically or intellectually, such that they are unable to remove a mask if needed. So it wouldn't make sense to ask a student to wear a mask if they're not able to take that mask down if they had trouble breathing or something like that. Those really are the only two reasons that a student would not be required to wear a mask in our school. What we would ask from students and their parents or guardians is that if they meet either one of those criteria, that they just contact the school, let us know. First of all, we would likely ask them for some documentation from their physician, the nature of the condition, things like that, so that we could work with the family in order to look at other options, one of which could be a face shield. There is at least one benefit to wearing masks and having a universal masking policy, even if it's done under a mandate. And one of those benefits has to do with quarantine. So the mask mandate gives us greater flexibility with quarantines. We will still be required to quarantine students and staff members, individuals, if they are positive for COVID or if they are close contacts for COVID. The first option is what we refer to as the gold standard. That is the 14-day quarantine. If a student is or an individual is positive or an individual has become a close contact, the gold standard really is the 14-day quarantine still. There are a couple of other options, one of which is a 10-day quarantine. An individual could return after 10 days if they have a documented negative COVID test. One of the things that makes this possible is the ability to have mitigation layers in place, like masking and some degree of social distancing. But that's another option. The third option is a seven-day quarantine. If there is a documented negative COVID test on day five, six, or seven, and this only applies to staff, so students are only really eligible for options one, two, and four, which I'll talk about in just a second. But staff members could qualify for a seven-day quarantine if they present a negative COVID test that was administered on days five, six, or seven of their quarantine. The last option is what's being referred to as test to stay. This is a fairly new option in terms of quarantine that the IDPH has supported, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. Obviously, this is only for close contacts. If an individual has tested positive, they would need to follow one of the other three quarantine options that I talked about already. If an individual is identified as a close contact, so that's an individual who is within three feet of a positive case for an accumulation of 15 minutes in a 24-hour period, they can actually stay in school if they complete a COVID test and get a negative result on days one, three, five, and seven of their quarantine, or following the exposure. Test may be a rapid antigen test, which is one of the tests that we offer at no cost to our students and our staff. It's optional. It's not required. But we can do that at any of the schools, actually, any of the buildings in the school district. We can administer that test and get results in about 15 minutes. Test results must be negative for the individual to remain in school. Schools have to have universal masking. So one of the caveats here is that if the mandate is lifted, and for whatever reason, we opt for the language that we used earlier, which is that individuals should wear masks but aren't required. If universal masking is not part of our process in the schools, then this option four is off the table. So that's something that we need to keep in mind. Students who opt for the test to stay and get negative test results may be allowed to participate in activities. So that's something that we'll work with the health department on. This test to stay program is something that we've not utilized before. So we would work with the health department on that and make sure that if a student is testing negative, we've tested on days one, three, five, and seven, that the health department still supports them having the opportunity to participate in activities. These are the only two changes to my recommendations from July 13th, so anything that I covered prior to is still in place. The only two changes are the mask mandate and the quarantine options that I talked about this evening. However, there is one other change that I'd like to just to bring to everybody's attention, and that is that IDPH and the DeKalb County Health Department are now using different criteria. They are using the CDC criteria to determine the level of community transmission. So I just want to talk about that for a second. So previously, and if you go to the IDPH website, you'll still see this information there. Previously, the IDPH used the following criteria. Both of these metrics, the test positivity in new cases per 100,000 residents, are based on a seven-day rolling average. You can find this information on the IDPH website. In fact, it's information that I check almost daily. I will tell you that the information is generally a couple of days, one to three days behind, so there's a little bit of a lag there as information is collected and then is sent to IDPH. When the metrics fall in two different levels, for example, new cases per 100,000 residents might be 60 and fall in the moderate range, but test positivity might be 2.3, the level of community transmission is determined by the higher metric. So in that case that I just talked about, the level of community transmission in DeKalb County would be identified as moderate. So you can see they've broken the criteria into three sections: minimal, moderate, and substantial. This is something we've talked about before, but it's been quite a while since we've talked about these levels. I'm not going to go through all of them there, but you can see, and they are posted on the IDPH website. CDC uses something different currently. IDPH and the DeKalb County Health Department are now following the CDC criteria that's listed here. Both metrics are also based on a seven-day rolling average. The data is usually a little bit more current on the CDC website. It's also different, even I think when you look at data from the same window of time, I'm not convinced, I will just tell you, I'm not convinced that it's exactly right. It's generally pretty close, but it's not, let's say, to the 10th of a percent. When the metrics fall in two different levels, as before, the level of community transmission is determined by the higher metric. And they break the level of community transmission into four areas: low, moderate, substantial, and high. As of this afternoon, my understanding is that using IDPH criteria, we were in the moderate range. We actually moved to the high range using the CDC criteria that I'll talk about here in just a second. So this is information I took off of both of these websites just this afternoon, tried to make it as current as I possibly could. Test positivity right now in DeKalb County is 5.2%. It's a little higher in Region 1. It's gone up over the last couple of days. Generally was around the 3% area. It's come up to 5.2% as of this afternoon. There are 108 new cases in DeKalb County, which has about 104,000 residents. So they would calculate that number a little bit differently, because it's based on exactly 100,000 residents, but that's a pretty good estimate for us. Using the CDC criteria, we were in the high range. The CDC criteria has us at test positivity of 7.97%. There are at least one or two more days in the CDC data that are not included in IDPH. They also have us at 122 cases in DeKalb County. So it gives you an idea of where we're at currently, based on those metrics. So I'm going to pause there before I go on to the next agenda item. Again, there wasn't a long update. Really, nothing has changed, other than those two things that I mentioned earlier, which was the mask mandate and the quarantine options that are now available to us. Any questions from the board? This kind of falls under 2122 planning, and I actually had a couple of slides in here, but frankly, I deleted them, because I was a little worried I was going to miss something and leave somebody out. There are a variety of events coming up, though, that I do want to just touch on, despite the kind of the weight of the mask mandate and the different opinions about that, I still think there's a lot to be excited about with the upcoming school year that starts just next week. So a couple of things I do want to highlight, the Back to School Bash and the State of the District event. Those are both partnerships with the Sycamore Education Foundation. Back to School Bash is tomorrow night in downtown Sycamore, starts at 5:30. There's food trucks, other vendors. I think we'll have, I see that Karen and Christian are gone. I think there may be some farm equipment that's going to be delivered that kids will have an opportunity to interact with. We're really hoping that the weather tomorrow is better than it has been for the last two days. So the weather report looked better earlier today. We hope it is better tomorrow night. That night ends with the showing of Toy Story at 8:00. It will be done outside. There's an inflatable screen that we use to do that. Really invite everybody to come out. Please help us get the word out and come out and have a good time in downtown Sycamore, and as well as visit the businesses that are open in downtown Sycamore to support that event. State of the District event will be later in September. That date was pushed back. That'll be September 28th, I believe. Sycamore Education Foundation is also hosting Take Roots coming up September 11th, so look for information on that on their website. You'll also start to see signs around town. And as the school year gets started, we have opening day for teachers on Monday. That's here in the auditorium, the first opportunity. I'm really excited about that. It's the first opportunity I've had to be in front of the entire staff all at once. I'm looking forward to that. We'll start that day here in the auditorium, and then staff will have the opportunity to go back to their buildings. Tuesday is a teacher work day. And then Wednesday is the first day of student attendance. So the end of summer is right around the corner, but we're really excited to welcome students back and get everybody back, including our staff. Couple of other events I just want to mention real quick. First National Challenge, we are having the First National Challenge. It's a great fundraiser for both the DeKalb and Sycamore Booster Clubs, Athletic Booster Clubs. That will be at NIU Husky Stadium, so invite you to come out to that event and help support the Spartans as they take on the DeKalb Barbs. And I believe the Athletic Boosters have The Taste of Black and Gold will be coming up, too. So look for that information on our website or on the appropriate website. Despite some of the challenges that we're still working through, I think there's a lot to be excited about, and we have a full return plan for the 2122 school year that starts next week. Any questions about any of those things? The next agenda I have is, agenda item that I have is a future-focused item, which has to do with the legislative process. So I thought we'd just talk about this. Doesn't really relate to resolutions necessarily, but we've talked a lot about local control tonight, so it does kind of touch on that. Obviously, the work of various areas of government in Illinois have an influence on schools. That's the executive branch, the governor, as well as the legislature. While education is generally a matter of local control, there is a balance between oversight from the state of Illinois and local decision-making. So we'd like there to be a nice balance. It doesn't always feel like there's a nice balance there, but one of the reasons to be involved in the legislative process, both as a board but also as a community member, is to see where that balance and that tipping point is in terms of local control. From the passage of new laws to the state budget, being engaged in the work of the legislature and the legislative process, following the work of those various areas of state government is important. One of the things that I know that the board members know, that the community members may not know, is that, and this kind of goes to the requests for the board to consider where that balance is right now in terms of local control and oversight from the state. There are a variety of organizations within the state of Illinois that represent education, K-12 education, that lobby on our behalf. So they're a little bit removed, but a couple of those organizations are the Illinois Association of School Boards and the Illinois Association of School Administrators. The Illinois Principals Association is also part of that. The Illinois Association of School Business Officials is also part of that. They work together to lobby on our behalf in Springfield when there are important issues that we have, whether it's locally, regionally, across the state, that we want to make sure are considered during the legislative process. They do a great job. I know the lobbyists from most of those organizations, many of them have been involved in the process for many years. So they have a lot of contacts. They do a great job advocating for local school districts and K-12 education across the state. But they have big shoes to fill and big tasks ahead of them. So I just want everybody to know that there are those organizations that help advocate on our behalf. So just some highlights from the spring legislative session, just so everybody's kind of on the same page. There were approximately 4,000 bills filed in the Illinois House of Representatives this last session. 4,000. 2,700 bills were filed in the Illinois Senate last session. And of those roughly almost 7,000 bills, about 10% of those impacted education in Illinois in one form or another, whether it was curriculum, finance, special education, transportation, you name it. There are a variety of areas where bills that are proposed touch on education. That's a lot to keep track of, and I don't know that last year was a record year. That's a lot to keep track of, and I don't know that last year was a record year, but it sure seemed like it was pretty close. One of the things that we've heard pretty consistently over the last year is that the next couple of years especially may look very similar to what last year looked like. So in addition to executive orders and other things that we have to keep on top of, there are these sorts of bills that come out and we need to be knowledgeable about. Sometimes they end up in a policy update, sometimes they don't, but it can be very challenging. So please know that we are engaged in that process at the board level here locally, but we also keep track of that through other organizations. It's critical to stay involved and follow legislative updates. The Illinois Legislative Map has been approved. I actually talked to our local representative Jeff Keicker about this recently. The Legislative Map has been approved, but it's not quite final yet. It's still undergoing a process. I think there are some challenges going on, and I would encourage everybody to stay on top of that too, especially knowing exactly where the legislative district boundaries are drawn and how they might change. And if they change, then how representation for our community in our area might change. So just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that as well. So I believe that's the last slide for future-focused. But just wanted to talk about the legislative process a little bit. I'd be glad to field questions or if there's any discussion that needs to take place.
No, I would just echo our conversation earlier with Steve, I think it's and the rest of the board, that it's very important that we continue to fight for local control, and it's something that I know many of us have been vocal about in the eight years that I've been on the board, and it certainly does not seem to be moving in a direction that gives me a lot of confidence. I think the, you know, between the executive orders, and there's a House Bill 2789 that would basically put us under the jurisdiction of IDPH, where IDPH could tell us when we can open and close, and that would apply to private schools as well. So I think it should be a concern for all of education there. And that's not to say, I'm not trying to make a stance here on what health guidance is good or bad. It's the question about who ultimately has that decision-making process, and it bothers me that a lot of these decisions are, as you stated, being put on us without any consideration for what our local situation may be, that there's no clear limits on when this could end or what we need to do to get out of it, other than here we are. So I don't care to get, I don't want to get drawn into a debate about the specific executive order that we're facing right now, because I think that the legal precedence has been unfortunately established, and our law firm has agreed with that, but there are lawsuits out there today that are challenging it, so we'll see where that goes. If that does end up overturning it, then I look forward to a conversation with this board on what we might do in that situation, but right now it seems like our path is pretty clear. But I do think that the public needs to know that local control is probably more important than ever, and we need to start doing whatever we can to support those changes downstate through IESA, ISB, ISBO, and all the other organizations that help lobby on our behalf.
I think it's probably important to know that the vast majority of those bills are being sponsored more directly towards the city of Chicago, and what they want and what they see is important, and they disregard the vast majority of the geographical area of the state. And most of those bills, if you look at their sponsors, are from those districts. So as was noted before, pay attention to who your representative is going to be now. And not only us as board members, but parents can also participate in testimony processes. If you have a disagreement with something, reach out to your legislator, and then when they have a hearing on it, you can go to Springfield and testify. And I've done that. I've done it with federal representatives as well for funding on certain things and direction on certain things. And sometimes it's superintendents, sometimes it's parents, sometimes it's kids, sometimes it's board members, but you have to be an active participant to make anything change.
One of the things that's changed, and Steve, you bring up a really good point, and that is, you know, being a witness. You know, when legislation is called or is being considered, you can do that electronically now also. Can do that through the ilga.gov, find the bill that you're looking for, and you can post a witness slip. You don't even have to provide testimony, but you can provide a witness slip and pick one side or the other, whether you're opposing or supporting. So I've done a lot of that over the last several years as a superintendent, when important bills are being considered, and that's something that anybody can do, not just administrators or board members, any member of the public could do that. And I know that legislators pay attention to that when bills are being discussed, the number of witness slips filed that are for or against a particular bill. So that can have a lot of weight.
All right. Maybe I should just take 90 seconds to explain the difference between that and a resolution that I was talking about earlier. So what I was talking about is our association, Illinois Association of School Boards, we have a policy booklet that talks about what our belief statements are and what our position statements are. So the resolutions are to put in place or alter or reaffirm those belief statements or those position statements, which, as Steve said in an earlier slide, then our lobbyists use as their guide when they're talking with either state or federal legislators on what our position is on a particular topic or area. And they also listen and track that, particularly in the last few years with some pretty hotly contested issues regarding guns in schools and security and some curriculum issues as well. So when you're getting the coverage from the Chicago news stations at the school board conference downtown, you know that the legislators are paying attention. So it does have impact. That's why we take the process seriously as board members for our association, but it extends to everybody in the community. You can participate in that.
Do you know when the Legislative Map will finally be approved or when we'll have a new map?
I don't have a date for that, no. I know it's still a process that's ongoing, and when I spoke to Representative Keicker, he didn't have an end date either.
Because the way it looks now, our district would have two different representatives.
It does, yeah.
Which doesn't make things any easier for us.
Nope.
Anything else?
That's it for the superintendent's report.
Okay. And we'll move on to open discussion and future agenda items. Open discussion, issues, observations, questions?
Just wondering if we should put that potential resolution as a future agenda and just as a reminder, not that it necessarily is on the agenda, but a reminder for us.
Yep, I made a note of that.
Other issues, observations, questions, future agenda items, other than the ones we've just identified? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations, and imminent litigation? So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shaila?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll adjourn to executive session, and then we'll return for a final vote and to adjourn the meeting. All right, we're back in regular session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shaila?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.